Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our first meeting in November, our first meeting after daylight savings time. I hope you're all adjusting better to that than I am. We'll go ahead and start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, it's just a reminder to everyone to silence their cell phones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Karski. And Craig is here if you need a listening device. So, that takes us to routine business, and I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Actually, okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from October 29th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $970,478.64.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
567,000 of this total is in the Highway Department, culvert replacement, a couple of trucks that they bought.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item are reports. There's a couple of reports from the Juvenile Detention Center for September 2019 and for the third quarter report. There's also a report from the Minnehaha County Coroner's for August 2019. And that takes us to the auditor's account for the county treasurer. There are reports there from April through September. It was my understanding that somebody from the treasurer's office might be here this morning for questions?
I checked.
Okay.
That's what I was told by the treasurer last night.
As I think there might be a few questions on those auditor's reports, we'll give the treasurer's office just a second to see if they're gonna be here for us to be able to ask some questions.
And Madam Chair, those reports are available in the auditor's office, is that right?
Yes. I think we'll go ahead and move on to personnel actions and we can come back to the auditor's report. So the first item is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a short list of anniversaries for the month of November, only four people, but it totals 65 years of experience. We have Grant Edgecombe in the museum celebrating 10 years, Daryl Jonas at the Highway celebrating 10 years, Michael Tushen at the Highway celebrating 20, and Jeff Gromer with Sheriff's Office celebrating 25 years of service. Don't think we're lucky enough to have any of them with us this morning, but our gratitude goes to them for, again, 65 years of combined service.
Very impressive. Thank you.
The next item I have for you is to record the volunteers in county departments for October 2019. 296, just to hear under that 300 mark, of people helping us out in six different departments across the county.
All right. Also, very impressive, we're very appreciative of all that service. We are. All right, I think we'll go ahead and go back to the treasurer's reports, or to the auditor's reports. For the county treasurer, as you, as we all know, we've been working on getting, treasurer's office has been working on getting reconciliations to the auditor so we could get these auditor's accounts. And we now have the reports for April, May, June, July, August, and September. And I see that the treasurer's here, if there are any questions for her this morning?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Barth.
Pam, thanks for being here.
No problem.
Now that we're caught up, basically, are we gonna be able to stay caught up?
Yeah, I think we will. The problem started with the new MUNIS system and it didn't work right for a while. It took quite a while to iron that out. It took well-trained people and cross-trained people. But now it's right on and we've got October ready to go, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Other questions? Commissioner Karski.
The daily cash transaction register that you are supposed to basically provide on a daily basis, or an account of all the transactions, is that being done at this point? I know in the state...
It is.
Okay.
And it was always done before until we got into this little problem with the MUNIS and retraining people, and it takes a little while.
Okay. Is that reconciled against something, or is that just a transaction register?
Against the bank balance and, of course, everybody else's receipts.
I'm sorry, one more time?
Well, we get the receipts for other people when they bring their money over, so... And sometimes they don't always bring them the same day. They might get the money that day, but they don't necessarily bring it that day. So then you have to reconcile that as well. But it balances against what other people are giving us and against the bank record.
Treasurer, if you don't mind speaking, or if you'd speak into the mic, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I guess my concern is, and I know we have several departments within the county that collect cash, correct? I mean, it's not just your office, there's probably five, six different departments. And when we look at our unreconciled differences, we're, the disparity was, you know, a few hundred dollars and usually to the plus side, so that would have indicated that we're not logging in cash receipts and we're, just end up over every day. But now we've gone anywhere from a $7,000 plus to a $5,000 negative, a $12,000 swing, basically. How can we, or what controls do we have that we can be addressing that so that we know? Where should that be addressed at? Who's...
Well, it needs to be addressed with our office and then we have to match up with the auditor's office and all the other offices. And they all have records, too. They record their money and we record our money, and in the end, for the most part, they usually balance. I mean, maybe not always be exactly the same, but they're, the differences have been minimal.
Uh huh.
Never gotten written up in an audit about it. It's never, not a, it's, you have like longs and shorts on a, people get money and they bring it over and that, their records basically have, we have to match our records with their records, and then our records, we have to match with what we sent to the bank.
Correct. So, you know, again, to see within a three-month timeframe to be $7,000 over and $5,000 under in different months, somebody has to manage those cash receipts within each department. Does each department responsible for their own? Do they all have the same way to do it? I mean, if planning and zoning receives cash, do they have the same type of record book that the Highway Department or the Register of Deeds does? Does everybody do their own thing when it comes to cash receipts?
My guess is they do. All I have to do is collect it and account for it and then match up our records.
So are you concerned that they're not matching up?
No.
And you're showing these great month, I mean, you're not concerned that you're a $5,500 short one month?
Well, that could be, well, it usually levels out the next month.
Well, they've been swinging wildly, these last ones that you submitted were swinging wildly. Before, they were...
What I got, I can't control what they get. I just record what they give me and they're supposed to, generally speaking, they level out. Sometimes it could be just one thing, it could be that. It could've been one piece of property tax that was paid and didn't get accounted for on the appropriate day, or, but it usually works out. And if it didn't, then we'd be looking into that.
So, and...
And we would be finding it.
Clearly wasn't working out in these last ones that you provided, so what are you doing to look into it, to try to track it down?
Well, I have a person that's in charge of doing the bank reconciling, and she matches it against the bank records. And then we match our stuff with every other department that brings us money, their files, and sometimes it takes a little time to run it down, but it doesn't stay there. That doesn't mean that that $7,000 is never accounted for.
I guess I would be interested to learn more about whose responsibility is it to make sure that each department is following a standard operating procedure to make sure that all cash receipts are accounted for similarly from department to department? I mean, I know the sheriff's office, sheriff's an elected official, he might have his own program, but he's still responsible to the taxpayers for reporting the money, as is the Register of Deeds and other elected officials.
Well, when they get to our office, they're all handled the same way, but I don't know of all the other offices, how they account for their money.
That's concerning.
We would look to you for some leadership in that area to try to help us get some assurances for taxpayers that the cash is being accurately accounted for as it flow, as it comes to you and then as it comes out of your office, so that we could have some, you know, it's just concerning when, I mean, you said you hadn't been written up, but in fact, we were written up by the legislative audit for...
This year, this year.
This year. So we were just recently written up, so it's a pretty high priority issue, I think, for all of us, and so...
I can assure you, it's a high priority for us, too, and we're working on it. We're trying to work more closely with the auditor's office.
Well, that's what we're trying to get from you, is some assurances and some ideas of exactly how it is that you're trying to work on it so that we...
Well, you get a report every month, so I guess you'll be able to tell.
Okay, well, we haven't been getting reports every month, but now we hope to.
Yes.
And so hopefully, we can work, and your office can work, to get these unreconciled differences so that there aren't such large swings, so we have more confidence that all the cash is being accurately recorded.
Well, I just talked to Vicki yesterday, and she said she'd let me know if there were any differences immediately, so we can get right on it. I check with my deputy treasurer every day going forward. We've been doing that since we discovered the reconciling issue. And it shouldn't happen, shouldn't be there. But like I said, I will be aware and you will be aware, and we are addressing it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
Well, I guess my concern is similar to what's already been expressed, but when there's wide swings between positives and negatives of any account balance, that needs to be found. And literally, that seems to me to be a policy and procedure and an operating problem. Because if it's gonna be a steady issue, then there's something that hasn't been accounted for. And in the legislative audit report, I think he suggested that he'd like to come back and help find that problem, because frankly, we can't accept that as another, that's the way it is kind of comment, because it really needs to be attracted.
Well, and I have been working with Jeff, and I asked him for some advice, and he's more than happy to come and help me, and he gave me some things that he thought we should do to make it better, and we've done those things.
And we're still having the swings and positive and negative.
Might have a swing like that.
No, we have had swings. That's not a might have.
Okay.
The issue is, do we need to call him ourselves to get him to come in and do...
No, I'm more than happy to call him.
Well, I'm just telling you that I don't think that, even if it's not reported because of the amount, I'm concerned about the fact that the operating process is not correct. And if that was my business, or anybody else in that business, they would not accept those swings either.
And we're not accepting them either. We're trying to fix it.
But we haven't really had a reason to feel comfortable that the problem's been fixed. At least I'm not.
Well, then...
Madam Chair, just to be clear, Pam referred to Jeff Schaefer with the Department of Legislative Audit as opposed to me.
Oh, not you. Sorry, Jeff. No, we're working with Jeff, and he's made some suggestions, and he's, I'll talk to him again if he wants to come in and look again and give us better advice, or more advice. And we're trying to do it, and we're working more closely with the auditor's office, and if we still didn't solve the problem, I'd hire a consultant.
I like that idea. Madam Chair, I wonder if our auditor would care to comment on the issue and how it came to his attention and where we're at as far as this resolution?
Well, he's welcome to. I think the issue really originates with the treasurer's office and getting the reports to the auditor. If the auditor feels like he needs to add to it, he's certainly welcome to come to the podium. I can't see him, so I can't tell if he's signaling me or not.
Disticulated like this, so...
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Well, I think you understand our concerns and, and we'd be really...
Yeah, and I have concerns as well.
Okay, well, we would welcome you to come back and give us a report, maybe even as early as next week, about your conversations with Legislative Audit and whether they have an appointment to come in and visit and review the processes. Okay? Thank you.
And I've been asking Jeff if he thinks we need a consultant to look at what we do and if there's a better way to do it.
Well, I think the commission has offered before to hire a consultant, and so...
That's what I was gonna say, Madam Chair, is that I think we would be willing to help Pam find the right employee to accomplish this.
One thing I think in the past, we've always just trained people in our office to do that particular job like any other job in the office, but going forward, I think we should probably hire someone who specializes in accounting.
I think that'd be a great idea.
And, yes, and I think we should do that. But that doesn't mean I'm gonna let the person doing it go. But going forward, I think we can use a consultant in another way to make it work better. But if, going forward, if I were doing it again, I would probably look for an accounting person. I follow the practice that's been in place for over 50 years, so we're doing it the same way it's been done in the county forever, but we're a lot bigger now, and so I think maybe it would be worth hiring an accounting person. I don't know.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So that takes us, oh, I interrupted Carrie when she was halfway through her agenda. So it takes us to item D under Personnel Actions.
The last thing I had for you this morning was to request your approval to sign the Administrative Services Agreement with UMR. You probably remember we received this anywhere from a couple months at the end of the year for the upcoming year, or a couple months into the new year. The reason there's that much flexibility on this is that the rates have already been negotiated and agreed to as part of a three-year contract. UMR just likes to have an updated Administrative Services Agreement signed each year. So I'm asking for your approval to sign the agreement with the rate increase of 2% for administrative fees that we've been anticipating and knew would be taking place for a couple years now.
Thank you for your patience. Are there questions for Carrie? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So that takes us to item six, abatements, there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. First item is a first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on November 26th for major amendment number 19-05. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. So yes, this is a first reading, major amendment number 1905. This is a request received to change the designation of a parcel from subarea C to subarea D in the High Prairie Ranch Plan Development District, as shown on the map here. The petitioner wants to change this because it's currently zoned in subarea C, it's designated for parkland and recreational use only, and the petitioner owns the property and wants to use it to graze cattle and also to hold some cattle in a small pen. And then subarea D would allow that to happen as it allows agricultural uses on the property. The, as this is the first reading, let's see, I'll put, go back to the legal description. The legal description of the lot is lots 18 and 18A of the High Prairie Ranch addition in the northwest quarter, section 8, township 102 North, range 49 West. And the petitioner is Robert Binstock. It's about two and a half miles east of Crooks. As the first reading, this is to authorize the auditor to publish notice, and staff is requesting the November 26, 2019 meeting. Is there any questions?
Commissioner Karski.
Not as much questions, Kevin. And you and I visited a little bit yesterday because I was curious about this, and when you, when it comes back for the second reading, if you'd kind of give us, I know there was, there's a little history with this property, if you could fill us in on those details, and then maybe also kind of let us know what the zoning is, the properties around there adjacent to that, so we have an idea of contiguous nature of that zoning. It would help a lot, so...
Any other comments or questions?
Move to set the date of hearing for, what's the date we're looking at? November 26th.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a first reading and authorize the auditor to publish notice of public hearing on November 26, 2019 for an amendment to the 1990 revised joint zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls, rezone number 19-07. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And this was a rezoning request that was submitted, it's in the joint area, it's at the corner of 26th Street and Veterans Parkway. And the applicant yesterday contacted me and has withdrawn their request. They will be annexing it into the city and dealing with the rezoning through the city, which was basically the direction that they received from the Planning Commission at last Monday night's meeting, or week ago Monday night's meeting. It was recommended to deny the request because it really, this property really is best suited to be developed and dealt, the issues need to be dealt with within the city limits because of the access issue, the traffic study, acts, or being able to tap into the water in the sewer, all city issues. So the applicant has realized that the best way forward is to annex this in the city, so they've withdrawn their request. They're going to be dealing with the city. It wasn't that, the land use was maybe not gonna, it was appropriate to rezone it to commercial, it just, it needed to occur in the city. So I would just ask that you acknowledge the withdrawal of the application. We do not need to set a hearing date because they have withdrawn their request.
Okay. Do you need to form a motion on that?
I would just ask you, you acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request.
I acknowledge the applicant's withdrawal of the request. Commissioner Karski.
You know, we've been dealing a lot with joint jurisdictional zoning here with Hartford, and I'm happy to see that. Personally, I think it should be annexed in. If it's gonna be controlled, you know, the city wants control over it, property owners adjacent to the city, they shouldn't have it annexed in. I'm glad to see it went that direction.
We had a lot of discussion. It was a good discussion at the meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting. I think everyone recognizes that's the best use for that areas, eventually to be commercial. It's just that you're really retrofitting two or three old small lots into a development plan, and how that's gonna be best accomplished is, there's gonna be a lot of discussion because really, it's really, for that particular spot, it's all an access issue, because they can't really get access off Veterans Parkway. So it's 26th Street and, and just given the logistics of where the driveway could occur, and that portion of 26th Street is annexed into the city, so it really, it really is, behooves the city, or I mean, it really falls upon the city to direct how it's gonna be developed, so it's best to get it in the city, so...
I'd agree, it's a very unique area, and so, okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. So that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien, and there is none. So this is opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda? Okay, not seeing anyone. I am gonna acknowledge basically an oversight with respect to our agenda. We had noticed for a second hearing today on proposed changes to the ambulance ordinance that was supposed to be scheduled for today, but through an oversight, it wasn't included onto our agenda, so that will be re-noticed and rescheduled for a later date. Okay. So that takes us to regular business. First item is item 10, to authorize the chairperson to sign amendment two of the 2017 Professional Services Agreement with IMS, Infrastructure Management Services. DJ Boothy, good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothy, Highway Superintendent. In 2017, we signed a contract with IMS to evaluate our asphalt roadway system and give us condition ratings and recommendations for maintenance, a maintenance program. And we try to do that every three years. We did it in 2014 and 2017. Now coming up in 2020 will be our third iteration of this assessment of our roadway system. And working with the DOT, we get a cost share for a portion of our roadway network that's inside the MPO. And so they have authorized us to do an amendment of our 2017 contract in order to perform the services in 2020. And so our request today is to approve the attached amendment number two for the agreement with IMS. The total cost of this amendment number two is for services to include the assessment in 2020, and then evaluation of the data that occurs in 2020, 2021, and 2022. And so the total cost is $96,326.88. We will be reimbursed a portion of that cost. The reimbursement from the MPO will be $21,136.60. These costs will be paid out over the next two and a half years or so before we expend all of those funds, but I'll stand by for any questions if you have any questions about the amendment.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you, DJ. And I understand how critical this work is to keeping our roadways in the condition they are. Our county roads are, I think, are in fantastic condition, and with all the water and stuff, I know we need to keep on top of things. A couple agenda items later, we're gonna be talking about the pictometry agreement with the, with the city, where the county and the city work on the same thing, and I know the city does a very similar thing for the city roads. Is there any advantage, and I'm sorry I didn't come to you with this question, it just came into my mind as you were talking, but is there any, would there be any advantage to working with the city? I mean, these people are bringing their trucks with their cameras and their lasers and whatever else, and I know the city does the same thing. Have we ever discussed that, or would there be any advantage to doing that?
That's a good question. We've, we've met several times over the last five years or so with the city of Sioux Falls, city of Brandon, and several other counties that are around us, and IMS to talk about, try to, trying to strategize having the assessment done at the same time. We were the first government agency in South Dakota to begin using IMS, and now several other clients have signed on with them as well because of how useful it has been for us. And so what IMS has basically told us is that they do enough work in the Midwest that their vans from Arizona are all over the place all summer long, and so it wouldn't result in a significant cost savings to try to time the services with, like, say, the city of Sioux Falls, just because they're, they're back and forth the Midwest all the time. And so we're not paying a huge fee for them to come up, mobilize from Arizona. They're a mobile unit that stays mobile all summer long.
Other questions?
Move approval of the agreement.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next item is to consider a motion to accept the highest bid and approve resolutions for the 2017 sale of tax deed properties, RDID 27054 and RDID 65784. Auditor Litz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office, and I'm here to report on the sale that we had. The annual tax deed sale was held at 10 o'clock on Saturday, October 26, 2019, on the lobby of the administration building. There were two properties advertised to be sold at the auction. Following two properties are auctioned, and the high bids received are as follows. Tax deed number 2612, RDID 27054, sold for $10,000. The purchaser put down 10%, plus a $30 register of deeds filing fee on the day of the sale. The balance of $9,000 is due in 30 days. Tax deed number 2605, RDID 65784, sold for $85,000. The purchaser put down 10%, plus a $30 register of deeds filing fee on the day of the sale. The balance of $76,500 is due in 30 days. The total sale proceeds are $95,000. All taxes, interest, and penalties due will be apportioned out to the proper taxing entities after a $400 per parcel fee is collected for the county's tax deed expenses. Today, I'm requesting that you accept the highest bid received for each property and approve the resolution of sale for two properties.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Benega.
Bob, I just have a quick question now. Were there a number of people that appeared to practice the auctions over this week?
I think we had close to 20 people down there.
Okay, so it wasn't just a couple?
No, it was not. And I would also mention to you that the two gentlemen who did purchase the properties are experienced in this type of situation, and I'm confident that if, before the 30 days are up, they'll come down and... and I'm confident that before the thirty days are up, they'll come down and pay.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Bob, are they still occupied?
One of them was, and then the other one. No, no, actually, both of them were occupied, yes.
It's no longer our business, though, right?
That is no longer our business. It's up to them to take care of that. As well as, as well as if there's other liens on there besides the property tax, it's up to them to do a quiet title action on it and transfer those, those liens onto the owner, former owner of the property. I would also tell you that the one property that went for eighty-five thousand dollars, the R.D. ID six-five-seven-eight-four, when we looked at it, it had a federal tax lien on it of nineteen thousand and some odd dollars, but I did notice that he did a separate tax, I mean, a separate title search on that, and it did not include the federal tax lien. So, I don't know whether that's a title company gaffe or if it got removed somehow, so.
Other questions?
I did have one more comment. You know, it's, it's kinda been discussed here. When we have excess proceeds from a tax deed sale, where those monies go to? Because we get a lot of calls from out of state, people wanting to know about those funds, and if they get returned to the former owner, and apparently, that might be the practice in other states. However, statute ten dash twenty-five dash thirty-nine states that after deducting expenses incurred by the county in the proceeding to take the tax deed and in the sale proceeding, shall be distributed by prorating the proceeds on the basis of the tax levies for the most recent year for which the taxes are included in the proceeds of the sale. And then also, S.D.C.L. seven dash thirty-one dash thirty-one specifically states, "The proceeds of any sale of land bid in and acquired pursuant to chapters ten-twenty-three, ten-twenty-five, and ten-twenty-six, after deducting the expenses incurred by the county in the proceedings to take the tax deed and in the sale of such proceedings, shall be placed to the credit prorata of the various funds and taxing districts, which are the beneficiaries of the tax for the year which the property was sold at tax sale." And we could not find any statute that says the excess amounts will be returned to the owner of record.
I'm sure. So, that would mean it would go to the schools, the townships, the cities, the county?
That's correct, and you know, the township, yeah, townships, and then the water development district, whatever taxing districts we have out there, and whatever their percent is for this year.
Other questions? Thank you for that information. I'd consider a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
I did have one more thing that I wanted to mention. We've got some other parcels out there that we're looking at. I set the tax deed sale two months ahead of when we were starting to work on it, but some of them have not been cleared up. It's, in my judgment, there are things that we do need to pay attention to, and so, we're considering having another tax deed sale sometime late January, maybe February, when we get these all worked out. And if that looks like a viable option, I would come before this body and ask you for permission to go ahead and do another sale.
Commissioner Barth.
Auditor Bob, do we have any that are commercial properties, or are they all residential?
You know, I think there's one commercial property out there, and the city wants that. It's, it's a, it's a communication center building with a little plot of land on it, and they've since gone out of business. It's right next to a city water tower. And so, I believe that there, it'd be beneficial for the city to receive that parcel, but we're working through all these things. The reason that a lot of these properties took a lot of time was there's, there's, there's missing people that we're trying to serve. There's a number of other issues that are with these properties, and we're gonna work through those issues and see how many we come up with, and see if we have enough for a sale. But some of the properties, there's three of them in particular I'm thinking of, they're abandoned houses. They've been languishing out there for a while, and they should be taken care of simply to get the neighborhood straightened out again. You know, these, these houses, they're abandoned, they're full of junk. You know, the city's taking care of some of them. We're taking, the county's taking care of one of them as far as snow, weeds, and, and, and things like that. And so, we're, but we're working through it, and like I say, once I get a little bit more information on when we could positively move forward, I'll come before this body again.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to item twelve, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign an agreement with Pictometry International Corp. for the two thousand and twenty Pictometry Acquisition Project. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, again. This, today is a contract that I'm asking the chairman to sign. It is a three-year contract with Pictometry. And for the audience that doesn't know what Pictometry is, that's our aerial photography. We, we jointly work with the city, and we purchased this together, and the amount is an annual amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred, forty-one dollars and fifty cents. And that is a three-year contract, so for three years, we will be paying that amount. We work with the city, which we will be bringing forth after this is approved, a memorandum of agreement with the city. The city's portion of that is, of that forty-two thousand is twenty-three thousand, four hundred, twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. So, the state's attorney has reviewed the contract, and they have indicated it's okay. The contract is included for your review. Heidi Yurkey, the GIS coordinators here, if you have any questions. But Pictometry is the vendor that we've used in the past. And also, to explain for the home audience, these aerial photography, this, this product that we are getting is used by a number of departments in the city and, and the county. So, like, the engineering department at the city, the county highway department, Equalization heavily uses this, our office, city planning and zoning, we all sort of work together and use this product. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Karski.
Appreciate that, Scott, you know, telling the taxpayers what they're getting when we buy this. How far down can you drill? I mean, can you see if, do you compare the last time they flew to this time to see if there's been additions or structures added to properties? Can you, can you measure the dimensions of buildings? How detailed can, you know, does this product make it for you?
Well, we, we, I probably'm gonna have to have Heidi come up here and explain some of this, but, because she knows all the, like, the pixels and how many inches that you, you, the, you can see. But we, we, we are able to, we retain the past images, and we, we can pull those up and compare. There is a program that we bought the last time called Change Finder, and that basically ran a pro, ran a list of, of changes from one shot, one set of photography to the next. Now, this year, we did not purchase that. That was like an extra twenty, thirty thousand. We didn't do that. That was primarily used for seeing buildings that had been built without building permits. That was the benefit of that. But, so we do retain all of the past images, and we can compare them. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
That, yeah, it does. And then, you know, can Equalization use it to, you know, basically?
Oh, yes, measuring. Yes, the, the, the Pictometry, I think, is accredited, and I don't wanna speak necessarily on behalf of the Equalization, but it's my understanding that the imagery can be used in assessing. It is so, the imagery is so good and so detailed, you, you can use it to determine the sizes of buildings, and that assists them in, in their.
Heidi's nodding her head.
Yes, then that's correct. It's my understanding that it's accredited for Equalization purposes. So, they can use that. And of course, we use it, you know, you see it on, on your screens all the time because that's what we're using to show you when we have rezoning requests and whatnot, what is out in the area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega.
Scott, when you bought the Change Finder software, what kind of values or changes did you see in people not reporting building permits and all that good stuff?
Well, a lot of that, a lot of that, we were able to get, we, we caught in last year's building permits, and I think we ended up with about, my recollection, sixty to, I would say sixty to a hundred building permits of structures that we were able to find that we were able to get on the tax roll, and then they, we required them to get a building permit. So, there, there was quite, quite a few, so.
Isn't there a value of knowing maybe what that is to, to decide if you're gonna use that Change Finder again in the future?
Well, I think there's a value to it, and I, I didn't exactly run how much revenue we, we, we got. I don't believe it paid for, immediately paid for. I mean, there is a value because you're, you're getting, your increased taxes now forever, and as, because you've identified those, those parcels and structures that have changed. So, there is a value. I, I think it was a, it was a good tool. It's definitely an equity tool because it, it, you know, makes everything equal. Everyone had to go through the same steps, so.
Commissioner Barth.
Scott, I don't recall, but there was a time when the city wanted to do this with the tree still in leaf because they wanted, I don't remember what it was, but it's better for us when there are no leaves on the tree to, to take these images.
Yes.
And secondarily, is this the system that allows us to determine the height of a building? So, a, you know, a three-story building doesn't look like a one-story building?
Yes. You, you can, you, you can do what's called the oblique imagery, which basically, instead of a, exactly, so the imagery, there's a couple of different methods. You can look straight down on something, and that is, I'm not sure what it's called, but I'm gonna have to have Heidi up here pretty soon. And then, there's the obliques, which basically lets you look at something, you know, from the side, and, and there are measurements that you can do on all those.
And that could be applicable to a law enforcement situation, too, I can imagine.
Yeah, we, a lot of, a lot of departments use this. Sheriff's Office, state's attorney. I mean, we have a lot of people that we help with products, you know, that need it occasionally and regularly.
Commissioner Karski.
Just a comment, you know, this isn't, you know, Big Brother government with their eye in the sky spying on people because most people follow the rules, and they get building permits, and they, they understand codes exist for a reason. And, you know, sometimes people do take shortcuts, and they think, well, it's a small building, or I really don't, you know, it's my land, I should be able to put whatever I want. Those are the ones that are basically found, but like I said, most people do follow the rules and, and understand why we do what we do.
And we're focusing on, we're focusing on, on one small aspect, and that's the, the enforcement. But I will also, for the public, let them know that this is also on our website, and I had someone yesterday from Maryland that is moving here and just was so grateful when I explained to her that you can go on the website. She didn't wanna work with a realtor yet. She just was looking for someplace out, you know, in the county that maybe she could have her horses, and I explained to her, well, you know, you can go on our website, and the GS, and you, GIS, you can get all kinds of information. You can get the zoning, the property owner, the flood information. That is all available to the public by just going on our website. So, there is a great value to being able to see that as well. So, it's more than just an enforcement, and it's more than a tool that we use internally. It's definitely a tool that the public has access to as well.
Great.
Anything else? Those are all great questions. And Scott did it all by himself, which is very impressive.
I had Heidi, I did have my backup here, so thank you.
I saw two hand signals going back and forth, so. All right. If there are no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming, Heidi. All right, that takes us to item thirteen, which is a brief on the local emergency management performance grant requirements. Jason Gierman, good morning.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Emergency Management. This, this is the second brief on this. It used to be called the State and Local Agreement, S.L.A., but they managed to make the acronym longer, so it's now the L.E.M.P.G. And basically, if you're wondering why I'm here today, is one of the requirements of this is to brief the county commission on this performance work plan. And what this performance work plan does, there's thirteen different areas, and each area has different subsections to it. Some of them only have a couple of subsections. Some have up to A through F as subsections. And what this eventually does is if, if emergency management performs all these requirements, the state will reimburse us up to fifty percent of the salaries for this. Now, right now, I'm at ninety-five percent of my work is S.L.A. or L.E.M.P.G. related. Ambulance doesn't count, and the police reserves do not count as part of the emergency management realm, according to the state. Doug Blomker, he's about at that forty-five percent to forty-six percent. So, we are looking at increasing his workload into emergency management more. So, you're gonna see a, more of a funding increase next year. So, as of this year, the amount that will be paid is eighty-one thousand, nine oh eight fifty-eight, reimbursement of salaries and benefits for Doug and myself. We do have a, some staff at the sheriff's office that helps us with the billing and finance and some other inventory and basic office work that are not included in this because they're just, wouldn't make that dollar amount even feasible to do that right now. We'll look to, look in the future if, if we need additional help, if, if the sheriff thinks that's necessary. Just a few of the things we have to do, and basically, this is just a preparedness document, and making sure that the county's prepared for anything that might happen, disasters, flooding, which we had plenty of that going on this last year. If there's any questions about some of the objectives and, and, or anything at all related to this, I think now is probably the time.
Any questions?
I do, if you don't mind.
Karski.
I feel like I'm jumping in a lot here. I apologize. This is all, this thing's all about dotting i's and crossing t's, proving that we've done the work. Is it fifty percent or nothing, or is, I mean, if they say, well, you only did forty-five, you only get forty-five percent because you only did so much, is it an all-or-nothing type of grant?
Well, I, you know, some of the issues with this, and there's been a lot of controversy over this throughout the state, especially with some of the smaller counties. So, this, this document, if it's in Minnehaha County or in Turner County, you have to do the same thing. So, you know, being in, in county government for my, my whole career, and especially with the sheriff's office, organizations are different and should be treated differently. So, some of this is kinda arbitrary, in my opinion. I don't think that they're just gonna say, I didn't complete one thing, and no, you're not getting funding this year. But there is that possibility. And I know Maggie has reviewed this and had some frank discussions with me on, on opinions on that, so.
Commissioner Barth.
I don't want Commissioner Karski to get away with saying he's talking too much because I have that title. But isn't it true, Jason, that some counties have done away with their emergency management based on some of this extra work that needs done?
Well, they haven't went away with their emergency management departments, but some are structured differently where it may be a deputy sheriff that's also the emergency manager. And for the work that is involved, for the five thousand dollars that they may get, it's not worth it to them to do all this documentation because it can become quite detailed, and it's become more detailed over the years as I've researched it and went back. And they change it a little bit every year, and they're, they're trying to make it better. However, there's been numerous counties that have opted out of the, the program.
I would just say, because I get to sign off on these quarterly, that there is, I mean, it is a tremendous amount of detail. I mean, the positive side is that, that anybody who wonders what emergency management people do all year long could definitely see that there is a lot of work going on. I don't know that people have wondered about that this year, but in the past, I think there's been times where people have wondered, you know, what does an emergency manager do all year long when the sun is shining and there are no tornadoes on the horizon? But there is a lot of planning, a lot of training and preparedness that goes into this office, which should make us all feel better when we go to sleep at night, to know that there are people that are trained in, ready to respond if there does happen to be three tornadoes that bounce around between our county and Lincoln County. So, I appreciate you being here this morning and the tremendous amount of work. You've, you've had quite the, you've been definitely thrown in the deep end in your first year here at the emergency management. I appreciate the work that you do, so.
Well, in being here today, I get to check another one off the list, so.
Glad you could be of service.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right. So that takes us to item 14, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the Hold Harmless Agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Health for the use of AED project devices. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. This morning, I had in front of you a request to sign a Hold Harmless Agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Health. What this is stemming from is an AED program that has been funded completely by the Helmsley Trust. If you guys aren't familiar with the Helmsley Trust, it's a nationwide trust that looks to find ways to improve, enhance medical response anywhere in the nation. They have identified a need in South Dakota for AEDs in rural areas. And this project is, it's over a million dollars statewide. And what it is, is they're funding it through the State Department of Health to give brand-new AED or defibrillators to law enforcement to deploy out into the patrol vehicles, both in city and rural areas. Out of this agreement, Minnehaha County is participating in this project. We are really excited about it because some of our AEDs we're getting to be the eight to 11 years old, still usable, but you've got to kind of think ahead and get ready to replace those technology items when they get to that time. We're going to have a more of an official rollout later on this month with the Helmsley Trust and the Department of Health. But in doing so, since we are receiving the AEDs through the State Department of Health, they are requesting that we sign a Hold Harmless Agreement, more or less saying that by them giving us the AEDs, they're not responsible for the, the use, the training. That still falls on us as the sheriff's office or the agency that uses them, which are more than acceptable because we train every two years for CPR recertification and the requirements for AED use.
Questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Karski, as we have the ongoing battle, who can talk the most?
Fully in, fully in support of signing the Hold Harmless Agreement. My question is, what do we do with the old AEDs? I mean, is there a market or some nonprofits, churches? I mean, what do we do with that equipment?
Very good question. Exactly what you're talking about, what can we do with these old AEDs? And that's something the Helmsley Trust has built into this program of wanting the agencies that receive new AEDs to identify other uses for AEDs in your communities. Maybe the community center in Colton doesn't have one. That'd be a great place to deploy one of our older AEDs that still has life in it and identify, I mean, a public library. Schools usually are pretty well suited already ahead of time, but churches. So they want us to expand the benefit of this program as much as possible. So we're tallying up what we have for AEDs and then identifying rural areas to deploy those in.
Great, thanks.
Anything else?
Move approval of the Hold Harmless Agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is yours as well. Authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020 Law Enforcement Service Agreements between Minnehaha County and the cities of Baltic, Colton, Crooks, Dell Rapids, Garrettson, Hartford, Humboldt, and Valley Springs.
Yes. This morning is our annual renewal for our law enforcement services for the eight communities that contract for services with the sheriff's office. Ours have remained the same from last year. The hourly rate has increased incremental just a little bit. We kind of gauge that based on health insurance, fuel costs, and personnel matters. So everything with the hourly changes for the rate has been communicated already earlier this summer with all of these communities. So we can open that discussion with them if they have any concerns about the cost. Seeing none back from any of the towns, we then start the process this time of year to sign our side of the contract for the 2020 law enforcement services, get them to all eight towns so they have time to sign them as well before the end of the year.
Questions?
I would move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Joe, if you don't mind, do you guys, you or Captain Walsh or whoever, go out and meet with these communities on a regular basis? Because it seems like sometimes when I've been out there, they say, we never see them or something like that.
For the administration side of things?
Yeah.
We do go out there, yeah. It's, it's, we get invited to different city meetings. It might not be somebody from administration, but we always, if we're open for invites to, if any deputies are out there, our deputies are usually stopping in the city hall just to talk to the city leaders to see if there's anything we can do to assist them in their town.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 16, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
Well, maybe it's new business, I'm sorry. I went to this meeting with the trade delegation from Egypt last night. Was at the Chamber of Commerce, Rock Nelson with the international marketing director for our area, and Mike Sabah kind of set it up. And it was quite interesting, these folks had previously been to North Dakota. And they've been on quite a tour of different places to include, you know, dairies and soybean locations. You know, Egypt is 100 million people that has difficulty growing everything that they need. And according to the ambassador, they're happy to meet actual farmers because in dealing with international corporations like Cargill or something, they don't know your name when you show up. But the, you know, if you meet a farmer, he remembers your name, even if you can't pronounce it. Anyway, it was a quite interesting thing. We had the Secretary of Agriculture there, Dr. Campeska hosted things, and it was, I don't know if we'll sign any big deals, but I think anytime when that happens, we need to try to make their mission to do trade a success. And so helping them be a success would been my goal.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Benega.
I think most of us were able to attend the Hartford Joint Jurisdiction Conversation last week. And I would say, at this point, I was somewhat very happy, I think, and everybody there was appreciative of the fact that they had an opportunity for input. I would suggest that when we talked to the community before, there was some question about how much rural input had been discussed in that process. And they had quite a bit of rural input at that meeting and some great questions. And frankly, I thought they did a great job of presentation, but more importantly, it's going to be a little longer process because people had lots of ideas about how that could be improved.
Okay, thank you. Any other liaison reports? I would just note that the jail leadership team met again last week. We meet twice a month and the project continues to be on track, on time, under budget. It's been a great team to work with and they're very collaborative about working with other stakeholders to make sure that they're proactively dealing with issues like construction out on Sixth Street and things like that. So, all right. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Karski?
Not a liaison report, just recognition that next Monday before our next commission meeting is Veterans Day. I always attend or do my best to attend the Veterans Day ceremony, which is open to the public at Lincoln High School. It begins at 10:30 and if you've never been to it, it is a fantastic service, fantastic ceremony. Just encourage everybody's attendance, especially county employees. You have the day off. If you want something to do to recognize the veterans, go to that ceremony.
I would agree that it's very worthwhile, so. Okay, any other new business? Auditor Letts.
Good morning, Commissioner, again, Bob Letts here. I wanted to report that later today, I will be leaving for Pierce, South Dakota. We're going, going, I'm taking a staffer with me that has never, has not worked elections since 2000. She's going to be drinking from a fire hose on this one. They've got a number of very interesting things. The Department of Homeland Security is going to be out there talking about cybersecurity. It's the first time ever that they've done an election school since I've been here. And last week, I got an email from EIISEC, which is Elections Infrastructure Information Sharing and Analysis Center. Government loves acronyms. And last month alone, there were 20, over 20 attacks on local election offices. They included website defacement, brute force hack attempts, denial of service, spoofing, which is the endpoint access when somebody clicks their computer on a bad email that could let things in, ransomware installs and typo squatting, none of which were successful. And so, but those things are out there. So I'm really glad to see the Department of Homeland Security. Also out there is going to be ESNS, who is our election vendor. And I was out to Pierce a couple of weeks ago and we, we did the certification to Windows 10 from Windows 7, so everything in the state that is involved with that type of thing will be updated. Election Services will also be out there and they are the people who program our elections that we put on a stick when we configure the tabulators and other things. And they take their information that they get from the Secretary of State in my office and move it to the ballot printing, which is sea change, and they will be there as well. So those, those two work hand in hand. So I wanted you to know that it's going to be an exciting trip out there. It's going to be a lot of things that a lot of people have, have not been exposed to. We've got a lot of new auditors and I think it's really going to be a good thing for the, for the state to become aware of these things.
Thank you.
And then when you get to old business, I've got some of that, too.
Let's see if there's any other new business. Any other new business? All right, you have the floor, old business.
Hey, Bob Letts, from the auditor's office again. You've all been made aware of a while back that we had some properties off of Dubuque Avenue that were in the wrong school district and being taxed inappropriately. As of November 1st, we've handled that situation. There were 28 properties that were affected, all of but 20, we've dropped those checks in the mail, except for one, they've not paid their taxes yet. And it looks like that they pay them themselves and not by a bank situation. But the, the properties had been in the wrong place since from 2015 through 2019. We figured out who had money coming back to them and all those checks have been paid along with a letter from the auditor's office explaining why they're getting that check and apologizing for the mistake that was made.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other old business? Scott?
I just, Scott Anderson again. I wanted to chime in on the meeting that we held last Tuesday night at Hartford and Commissioner Benega brought that up. I just wanted to also make the public aware that it looks like they're going to have another meeting in January and I will be working closely with Hartford. We provided them the mailing list, which I think was very helpful to get the word out to exactly who to, to contact. We had, I would say, close to 100 people, maybe more than 100. So, and it was, it was a nice, long meeting and I think we will, I will be helping whoever is writing the zoning ordinance to make sure that they have a product that's going to work well with what I think the intent or what the desires of the citizens are out there, so. But I just wanted to make everyone aware that it looks like they'll have another meeting in January.
Okay, thank you.
And when we find out, I'll let you know.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any other old business? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion to recess the Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will try to reconvene about 10:15, about 10 minutes. Thank you.